And next we have our presentation from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And this is on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which has been a big project. I'd like to introduce Sylvia Van Aulich, who is the Executive Director of Southern New Hampshire Planning, and Zachary Zwick, who is the Senior GIS Analyst at Southern New Hampshire. So they are the experts on housing needs and everything, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. So I figured you out already now. You're all going for ratings, higher ratings, because, I mean, first you have a cooking show, there's comedy. I mean, you're really, you're great. I'm used to being behind the scenes with this board.
Cooking, comedy, and housing. What could be better?
We've got to compete with the streaming services.
Yeah. No, but I'm used to being behind the scenes with this board for doing some plan-reading analysis for Kelly and for Colleen before Kelly, and so it's nice to be in front of you for a change. And of course Zach, he is our GIS and data guru. So a little bit of warning I'm going to give this board. Because it's Valentine's Day, similar to Valentine's Day and all the emotions that you might have on Valentine's, you may experience some of those when you take in what we're going to show you, because some of this might shock you, it might depress you, and Valentine's Day can be depressing for some. I'm not staring at you for anger.
That was pretty interesting, John. As soon as you said it, it looked right at you.
It might make you mad, some of the data. So, and then at the end, we hope to bring all those emotions back and make you hopeful. So what we're going to review today, okay, let's see how this works, is where I'm going to start us off, do a quick review of some of our outreach that we did, and Zach will take you through a lot of data. I warn you, there's a lot of data to take in, and it's very interesting. He is very good at this. And then we're going to talk about some strategies, what we're recommending to you, to the region, and actually to New Hampshire. So let's start. So we'll start with our outreach overview. We went through a lot of work with all the regional planning commissions in creating public surveys that would be done across New Hampshire. And those included a general public survey and employer survey, a community focus group discussion where we had several folks from Lunendary and all our different communities involved. There was a developer's lunch at St. Anselm's, so they could throw in their 25 cents, and then a social service provider survey. We wanted to have really a very wide perspective, and I think you can see from that overview that we got it.
Can I stop you for a minute?
You sure can.
Just from a procedures standpoint, I just looked down the row, and most of the board looks like they're not paying attention to you, but this computer is down in the desk, so they're looking at the presentation in the computer that's down here.
I was not worried.
They're not ignoring you, and they're not being rude, and I just want you to know.
Thank you. I was just explaining to Zach beforehand that you all have the most deluxe setup with your screens. I knew about your screens.
It was the best money you could buy in 1974, whatever it was.
No, but it's really a great setup, though.
We moved into this building in 2005.
Yeah, that year. So did these computers.
So this is the, they're a little slow, you know, so sometimes if we pause, the screen hasn't come up yet.
Anyway, that's why everybody's looking down. I didn't want you to think we were being rude, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That's a good reminder. And, look, this is for crying for later. But if you have questions, please pause us along the way, because there's a lot to take in. All right, so this, these, this graphic is from one of our questions that asked residents, "When thinking about housing in your community, please indicate your level of agreement with the need for additional units for each stated housing type." So in general, if there's green, people agreed. If it's red, they did not. If it's yellow, it's neutral. So the first one was high-end housing. You can see what people thought. They did not really think that was important. Moderate income, they felt very strongly about that, sort of that missing middle. And then low-income housing, and you could see they, a good 75 or, when is that, 66% or so? That looks like two-thirds, yeah, two-thirds percent.
Sylvia, this is Lunendary, though, right? This is the area, the region?
This is the region. We will get into Lunendary specifics. This is the full region. But I can tell you for this specific group, Lunendary felt pretty much similar to this.
Okay, so the region is from like Salem to Manchester to?
All right, let's review the region. So the region, it's 14 communities in the Greater Manchester region, and that includes, the furthest to the south is Wyndham, the furthest north is Hooksit, the furthest to the east is Chester, and then to the west is Francistown. Our largest community is Manchester. Our smallest is Francistown. And we have everyone in between.
Sorry, who were the people sampled that gave you these percentages?
These are residents. So this is from the resident survey.
Of this region?
Of your region, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission region, yes.
Is there a number per se to what, you know, what is considered low income versus moderate income versus high-end housing?
And Zach will review those.
Fantastic.
And in addition to that, are they thinking moderate income like something I can afford? Or are they thinking, or say for low income, are they thinking of your traditional, like, low-income housing?
I don't think there was a prompt for that. It was just, yeah, people answered it as they, I'm not super familiar with the survey, but I imagine they just saw this answer and then had, you know, their options. So whatever they brought to it, I believe, so.
Yeah, I don't think there were full explanations. If anything, there was maybe a small definition, but but we'll keep going. How's that?
Zach, you can grab that microphone right off of that desk and give it to, there you go.
All right, that's better. All right, the other three types of housing, rental housing, senior housing, and housing for people with physical disabilities. So you can see what the region thought on all these. This was also from, I believe this was from our conversations? No, no, this wasn't. I'm sorry. This was from the resident survey. And these are all comments from Lunendary residents, but we, so let's just read them. "We could not find a reasonable single-family home, so we decided to rent. We've been searching for over three years, being bid, being outbid many times by cash buyers. We were laid off during COVID. We've been struggling before that. The house went into foreclosure. My husband found housing with a friend, and I was not able to move in there, so I ended up homeless. We purchased in 1998 at a time in the market when we could qualify for a loan. We knew we'd have to make improvements to replace aging elements, like the roof and siding, windows, boiler, et cetera. When this has, this has increased our mortgage again and again. We should be five years from paying this off, but we are about 20 years away. This makes it financially impossible for us to move to senior housing that is ADA compliant. I am living with an abusive partner. I had to remain in this situation because I can't find housing I can afford and in an area that I would feel safe being on my own." So these are from Lunendary residents. I told you we would depress you. Remember the end part? You will get hopeful, but there'll be a lot in between. So I mentioned we did a social service worker survey. 78% of those said we need a demand for housing unit, sorry, the demand for housing units greatly exceeds the supply, and 74% felt that the number of people facing housing challenges has increased from their own work. Housing burdened, and Zach will get a lot further into this. Do you want to do this one?
No.
All right, I'll keep going. So what we heard also from residents is that 48% feel they are housing burdened. What the data shows is that in, for example, Lunendary, if you look at the definition of what housing burdened is, which is the percentage of households paying 30% or more of their income on housing costs, actually 25% of all households are housing burdened in Lunendary. And for those making $75,000 or more, 7% of those are housing burdened. What we heard from employers, so this is a huge issue, and really because I think we've all seen or experienced employers where they have signs up looking for staff, or looking for a cook, or looking for a waitress, or looking for an accountant. We're looking for a planner. You guys have looked for a planner. There is so little housing, and so from our, the employers who responded to the survey, 65% that housing near their business was very limited. 62% said housing supply shortages impacts my ability to attract or keep workers, and that housing is needed for visiting professionals who work at places like Parkland Medical Center in Dartmouth-Hitchcock. In our community focus group discussions, we heard, "People from out of state find housing in our region to be economical, although it is not affordable for current residents, let alone volunteers like firefighters. It is difficult for older adults to age in place because they can sell their home for a decent price but can't afford to buy another place in town. The public is in need of education surrounding low-income and workforce housing, as well as debunking myths about density."
What's the myth?
What's the myth?
Debunking myths about density. What's the myths?
The myths? That's a good question. So.
Zach's gonna answer it later.
This is, I'm gonna just keep saying that, aren't I? What do you think that meant?
That, you know, maybe they were referring to the idea that density causes more pollution or increases school costs or something like that. It's hard to tell what exactly.
Yeah, we're, this is a quote from someone.
It's an open-ended question.
All right, now I'm gonna send it over to Zach.
The top one here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through a lot of data here, bit of a fire hose. We, this is by easily the biggest project I've ever worked on. The appendix that I did for the data is 300 pages. The appendix for the survey is 500. So, you know, if you really want to know something, it's there. You can go find it. But I tried to hear to pull out some of the key data points really, you know, that were illuminating to us and have been as well with people that we've presented it to.
Did I, Zach, did I miss how many people were in the sample?
For, for the survey, I do not know that.
Which one, the resident one, or?
I'd like to know in general how many, how many people were questioned in any part of it, because that's 35% of something, if it's four people.
Zach isn't gonna go over the survey. He's going over data points.
Unfortunately, Tammy, who did our survey, is in Japan, snowboarding at the moment, so. But, but the, all of that data is in the appendix.
It's 7:30 a.m. in Japan. She might answer.
I asked her if, I asked her if she would phone in. She, she's apparently unavailable. There are no telephones in Japan, so she can't make it. But if you go to the appendix, if you go to our website, and there, on our website, there's still a big button that says like, Housing Needs Assessment. If you click that, it'll take you to the project website, and there there are the appendices, and the third appendix, Appendix C, is the one for the surveys, and it lists exactly how many people responded for all these.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So first, I wanted to start with a little context, and one thing that I hear a lot is that New Hampshire is a rural state, and that's true if you think of New Hampshire as in the land. But where most people actually live in New Hampshire is urban. Three out of five New Hampshire residents live in an urban area. And you see, we're kind of different. We're not really like Maine or Vermont. There on the left, you see the percentage that lives in an urban area. You can see there, it's in the 30s. But we're also not like Connecticut, Massachusetts, or Rhode Island. We're all, who are all up close to 90. We're in that kind of close to 60 range, so it's kind of a different mix than any other state in New England.
This, this map is like stunning, just how much of the state nobody lives in.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah, the white, it's, I was actually showing a different map to my mom this weekend. She's like, what, what do you mean, nobody lives there? Nobody lives there. It's either national forests, it's unincorporated area that has no residents, you know.
Yeah, it's the wild New Hampshire.
Yeah, once you get, yeah, once you get north of, you know, Plymouth, it gets pretty, low, low density pretty quick.
Try to get a phone signal up there.
Keep it going.
We also wanted to give you an idea of picture in time of where we are. So here on the left, we have New Hampshire's population growth rate over time. You can see it's kind of, you know, around 5% in 1920, 1930, 1940, and then around 1960, the highways are built, the interstate is built, and suddenly there's a huge boom in Southern New Hampshire population. And, you know, we can see there that in 1980, Zach and his family moved to Hudson, New Hampshire, as part of this boom, and we can see it on the right there in terms of just the miserable growth there in Northern Massachusetts and in places like Derry, where between 1970 and 2020 saw 380% growth over those decades. And the same, you know, Derry and Nashville, all these different places, where you could suddenly now live in Southern New Hampshire and work in Boston or Northern Massachusetts. So where are we with housing? Here is a listing of the total housing units in Lunendary. Now, most of this data either comes from 2020 or 2022. We're a little older, we're a little dated now, but it should still be fairly reflective. So there, according to the census, there's about 9,600 occupied housing units in Lunendary. Of those, 86 are owner-occupied, about 14 are renter-occupied. And that's higher in terms of owner-occupied than we see in the region and in the state. For total housing units, 69,000 of them are single-family detached. 69%, excuse me, are single-family detached. 14% are single-family attached, which would be like a house, a condo. 5% are duplicates, up to quadplexes. And then 10% are five or more, what we traditionally think of as multifamily. And about 3% are manufactured. And if you compare that to the state, you know, it's pretty close in terms of single-family detached, differs some of the other types of housing units. So that's the housing units. What about the households? Here we're looking at the percentage of households by type of unit with three or more people in it. So in the SNHPC region, there are 47% of all single-family homes have three or more persons in them. You can compare that to multifamily, that'd be only 22%. So what, for single family, for multifamily homes in the SNHPC region, one in five have three or more people. The rest have two or less. And you can see, I've grouped it there into Manchester and then towns with, in our region with 10,000 or more, which would be a town like Derry, oh, excuse me, a town like Lunendary, and then those less than 10,000. And, yeah, let's move on. So here we have on the left is again households, and then the persons per house, persons per households, two or, two or less, or three or more. So in Lunendary, 52% of households have two people, 47% have three or more. So it's about evenly split. That's very different from the state. You can see the state there, 75% of all households have two or less people. But if we compare it to where Derry, Lunendary was three, several decades ago at this point, the chart on the table on the right shows three or more persons per household in 1980 and then in 2020. So in Lunendary, in 1980, 59% of all households had three or more people. That's dropped to today about 47, so it's about, come down about 12%. And we see that across the region and across the state, as the state is aging, and we're just not seeing as many students, and these young families that all came in, like mine in the 1980s and 70s and 80s and 90s, have, you know, matured through that cycle.
Or would it be, or can it be also, the housing we're developing for seniors? That's why they'd have only two in that?
It could be. Yeah, I'm thinking a lot of these are seniors, but I'd imagine a lot of them are seniors in single-family homes, maybe looking to transition to something new. I don't know. So we can see this in enrollment and minors per household. That, over the past two decades, New Hampshire public school enrollment has fallen by 22%. Between 2013 and 2021, Lunendary enrollment fell by 11%. And so that's just some school enrollment, but we can see it within the number of minors per household. So this is just total number of minors divided by the number of households in 1980 and then in 2020. So Lunendary in 1980, there was on average 1.08 minors per household. Today, it's 0.59%, and we've seen that decline across the board. Again, as we're an aging state, where we, our median age is higher, we have small, fewer young families and school-age children. In the SNHPC region, the number of persons less than 18 years old per household fell by 35% between 1980 and 2020. Statewide, it fell by 43%. In Candy, one of our towns, it fell by more than 50%. Okay, now we're gonna switch over to housing costs. So here we have two maps, excuse me, two graphs. The one on the left is for the state as a whole, the one on the right is for just our region. And then we have in blue, medium home purchase price, and in orange, medium gross rental cost. So that's your rent plus utilities, plus the fee for having a dog, whatever. On the left Y-axis, we have the, we have the medium home purchase price. So that's the purchase price and, you know, $100,000. On the right Y-axis, we have the median gross rent. So we can see for both for the state and for the region, you know, median rent is pretty low for a little while, and then about 2017 starts picking up and then shoots up. For purchase prices, we see it grows a little bit, and then about 2007, there's the housing crisis. Prices come down, they're down for, you know, several years, and then again about 2017, 2019, they shoot up again. So what's going on here? Well, one of the causes is just simple supply and demand. Here's a graph showing for the state as a whole, the growth that happens every decade. The black is the absolute growth, so the total number of units. The relative growth is in blue. The Y-axis on the left is the, is the number of units. The Y-axis on the right is the percentages. So in 1980, looks like we were, you know, we grew, and then in the 80s, we grew by, excuse me, between 1970 and 1980, we grew by 130,000 units statewide, and about 30%. You can see that goes down. It picks up a little bit. Between 2000 and 2010, when the housing crisis, there's a bit of a boom, and then really drops off to where now today, you know, in the last decade, we only built, you know, 20,000 units. We can see this again and also with rent, with rent. So the median rent here is in orange, and the rental vacancy is the green. So on the left Y-axis is your rent, and on the right is the percentage of the number of units that are vacant. So you can see that rental prices are fairly low and consistent around, you know, between, around 1,000. And, you know, there's the jump there in rental vacancy around 2009, and then it slowly comes down. And as it comes all the way down, rents start to come up approaching, you know, you know, I'm sorry, that's, more than 1,500 for the, for the state. The median rent has grown by 40% since 2018. That's about an annual increase of 7%. Meanwhile, the percentage of vacant apartments has fallen to less than 1%. I did the calculation for my own rent the other day between 2021 and 2020, I guess 2024, and it was, it grew by 38% over that period. So, yeah, lucky me, but this is a real thing that we're seeing statewide. We can also see it with the homes. The median purchase price there is in blue. The average number of homes listed each month is in red. So again, the purchase price is on the left axis, the number of homes is on the right axis. And so it jumps, the average number of homes in 2007 jumps up suddenly as everyone, homes are, you know, now worthless, and they're all on the market, and the median price stays, you know, falls a little bit, but actually doesn't fall that much. But then around, you know, 2016, the supply starts to come down and the prices at the same time jump up. So there were 4,400 fewer listings in July of 2023 compared to 2003, despite the state population has grown by 110,000 residents, or about 10%. You know, the median purchase price in Lunendary grew by more than 80% between 2016 and 2023. And that's something we see throughout our region. And you might say, well, it's just inflation. It's inflation, everything's more expensive, so this is more expensive, too. Well, it's, inflation definitely plays a part, but even when we control for inflation, like we do here, looking for, you know, we inflate those previous years to get them to $20,000, you know. Homes are 50% more expensive today in New Hampshire than they were in 1990, even when inflation is taken into account. Now, this is a lot going on here. This is not my graph, but I want to use it because it shows us something. The UNH Survey Center has been doing a poll now since at least 2003, where they, well, every once in a while, ask some people, "What is the most important problem facing New Hampshire?" And we can see there that in, you know, 2003, when they started, 49% it was education. And that was the top-listed item for a while, or to about 2008, when suddenly jobs and the economy shoots to the top in yellow. That's not surprising. Over time, that slows, it slowly comes down, and then about 2015, 2016, drugs and addiction jumps up. And that's partly because the economy was better, and that the opioid crisis had, you know, hit full, full force. And that's at the top for a while again, until about 2020, suddenly it falls off, and a new worry, a new problem called COVID-19 shoots up there. And for about a year, it's the number one, then it fights basically with jobs and economy for a while. And then around 2023, suddenly the green line that has been at the bottom the entire time rises to the top, and housing becomes the most important problem facing New Hampshire residents. And they've done two surveys now where it's been the most important problem. We're gonna shift gears a lot here, so now we're gonna talk about Housing Choice Vouchers Program, also commonly known as Section 8. In our region, we have three housing authorities that manage housing choice vouchers. One is the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, which manages them throughout the state. The other is the Manchester Housing and Redevelopment Authority, which manages them mostly in Manchester, but also within a certain boundary. I can't remember if it's 10 miles, whatever it is, but so there could theoretically be some in Lunendary. The third is the Derry Housing Authority, but it's volunteer. I couldn't get any data from them, but they're fairly small. They only have less than 100 units. Here we have the columns, you know, for the, there, where the top, the top one there is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Those households waiting to be, waiting to join the program. So New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority has over 11,000 households waiting to join the program. Manchester Housing has about 4,300. The second table down there is the number of households that have been accepted, but haven't found a unit that would take their voucher. Statewide, it's for New Hampshire housing, it's about 470. It's about 130 for Manchester. And in terms of those who have a Housing Choice voucher and are currently using it, are in the program and are using the voucher, for New Hampshire housing, it's about 4,100, and for Manchester Housing Authority, it's about 2,100. This is a map, a table showing the Housing Choice voucher there. That's the first column. Then the, the next column is the Housing Choice Voucher Program as a percentage of all the Housing Choice voucher programs in the region. So example, Bedford has 30 Housing Choice Voucher Program participants. That's about 1% of all the vouchers in the region. Lunendary has 90, which is about 3%. And if we compare that to the all, the total housing rate, you know, of all the housing units in the region, how many exist in a particular town? So 9% of all housing units in the region are in Lunendary. So we can just see the comparison there, that there's a bit of disparity between where these are being used. So we can just see the comparison there that there's a bit of disparity between where these are being used. Only three percent in Londonderry, when Londonderry has nine percent of all the units. Compared to Manchester, eighty-four percent of all vouchers are in Manchester, despite that Manchester only accounts for forty-five percent of all housing units. Next, we're looking at income restricted housing. And now this can be everything from affordable housing, you know, public housing, workforce housing, housing that's controlled by a deed restriction, all that. And this is very hard to track because it's, there's no real good state agency does this. Luckily, Londonderry keeps pretty good track of this. So I was able to work some of these out. So there are about a five hundred and fifty income restricted housing units in Londonderry. And that's eleven percent of all the housing, restricted housing units in the region. And compared to Londonderry's nine percent of all housing units, which means Londonderry is punching above its weight when it comes to this. It's, you know, you have more income restricted units than you would expect just based on the distribution of housing units alone. And then it just shows planned and proposed. And this is, this again is a couple of years old at this point. But at that point in time, there was, there's supposedly five units that were planned or proposed within there. Yes.
Zach, so, so by definition, income restricted, your, your income is X, and so then you're allowed to move into this place Y that, that gives you a break on your rent.
Right.
A voucher.
A voucher, so a voucher, you can just take, it's, it's a voucher that's good for whatever the HUD applies. So it's, you know, it's good for fifteen hundred dollars every month. It's just the same as a, as, you know, a check. And it can be used in any unit that would accept it, which the landlord does not have to accept it in New Hampshire.
So, so can there be a voucher in an income restricted property?
No. These are, we tried to separate these. I can't, can't promise that. But they are tracked in different programs. And most of the times, this is administered, it's either public housing or it's something that's done, you know, it's managed at the state, at the town level. And the state doesn't really have a good idea what's, what's going on and the federal government certainly doesn't.
Got it. Thank you.
And again, just to reiterate, if there's any questions, please jump in because by the end, you're not going to remember. I wouldn't. So just please, go ahead and we can have a discussion. Okay, so as part of the housing needs assessment, the state and all the RPCs worked with a consultant to do two different products. One was the fair, where fair share housing numbers, which I'll go over in a bit. The other was a rent, it was an affordability calculation. And this was, you know, trying to figure out by different occupations and pay grades, would rental affordability be, would housing be affordable for renters and homeowners making a certain, within certain, you know, common occupations, police officer, nurse, salesperson? So the inputs for this were that we took the median gross rent by region and that came from New Hampshire Finance Authority. Excuse me. Then we got the wage income for fifteen occupations. For, these are the tax dollar, the tax return information for these occupations for our region. And then we have entry level, median and experience. And this is, these are breaks down, breakdowns that the New Hampshire Employment Security Office does. And so entry level is the average of the bottom third for those in the occupation region. The median is just the median and the experienced is the average for the top two-thirds of that occupation. A further assumption for this, we said, okay, we're going to assume that it's a one wage earner household. So there's only one wage earner. And then households are considered to be cost burdened if gross rent is thirty percent or more of their wage income. There's a lot going on here, but we can walk through it. On top there, you can see the median rent at the time we were doing this in twenty twenty-two was about fifteen hundred. And then we have below that, a bunch of fifteen different occupations. Thank you. And to the right there, we have broken down into six columns where two columns go together. You know, the first is the entry level wage, then there's the median wage in the middle, and then there's this experienced wage on the right. And so it's just, I wanted to ask the question, is it the entry late? Is it, is it affordable? And it's either yes or no, whether it's more than thirty percent. And then there's the cost difference. So you can see for entry level engineers, they could spend two hundred and fifteen dollars more than the median rent. You know, and, you know, the police officer is, it's unaffordable for the police officer by ninety dollars. So we can see there for entry level, the only people that is affordable for are engineers and nurses. And then once we go to median, we start getting the people like electricians and patrol officers go in there. And then experienced, it's actually the same, but heavy and tractor-trailer truck drivers then also qualify.
And this is on the assumption that it is a single earner household?
Yes.
Because it's a rent.
Yeah, rental, yeah. And we, for these, they gave us all these, these different models and the assumptions that you put in make a whole big difference, especially we're going to look at home ownership here. Home ownership is much more complicated because, you know, it depends, you have a down payment, when do you get it, what's your interest rate? So, you know, for all these, it depends on the inputs that we decide to, you know, input.
Do you think that assumption's accurate, that most, that a single earner?
For a rent?
For rental, it's much more common.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they're, you know, it's also very possible that, you know, you have a lot of people with, you know, that you have two people, but they also want, a lot of times, they try to see, would it be affordable for a single parent? I think is typically kind of the baseline that they use. So for home ownership, as I mentioned, it's more complicated. The, the median home price again comes from New Hampshire Housing. We have the occupations, that's the same as before. But then we have assumptions. And in this one, we said, okay, we're going to assume it's a one and a half wage earner households. How can you have half an age, half a wage earner? We're thinking, working on the assumption that you typically have two wage earners and one make, person makes more than the other. So this was just an easy way to account for that. The interest rate when we did it at the time was five point five percent. And we also said, okay, these are going to be people that are coming into this with some equity, so they have a down payment. So we assumed the down payment for this was thirty percent. And percent of all the payments go into property taxes, utilities and insurance was forty percent. Again, households are housing cost burdened if they spend more than thirty percent of their wage on the income, I'm excuse, income on housing. Here in twenty twenty-two, for our region, the median home price was thirty nine, it was about three thousand ninety. You see all the assumptions there.
Three hundred and ninety.
Yes, three, excuse me, three hundred and ninety thousand. Again, we have all the different incomes there with the breakdown. And the price difference there is the price that you could pay for a house versus what you were. So for the heavy and tractor-trailer truck drivers, they could afford a house that was a hundred and forty-seven thousand less than the median price. That's what that represents. So nobody in the entry level can afford that. And the median engineers and registered nurses are now able to afford that. And then we get to experienced patrol officers are also able. And electricians are pretty close. It's six thousand dollars. So that's, you know, basically even. Okay, the other component that they, that they did was the fair share housing production model. And we did this with all the, all the RPCs worked with both the state and Root Policy, who was the consultant to put this together. And this was done to better the, for us, to help us with our, meet our, meet our requirements, thank you. Meet our requirements with RSA three six forty-seven and to help towns understand their responsibility under RSA six seventy-four fifty-nine. RSA six seventy-four, RSA six four seven, rather, is commonly known as the Workforce Housing Law. And there are a couple of different things I wanted to pull out here. One is that that law says that ordinances and regulations shall provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for development of workforce housing, including rental and multifamily housing. And the definitions that that RSA uses are reasonable and realistic opportunities means opportunities to develop economically viable workforce housing within the framework of municipalities ordinances and regulations. And for this, for the state, workforce housing means that intended for sale, which is a hundred percent of the median income for a four-person household. And rental housing is sixty percent of the median income for a three-person housing. So that's, that's the law and that went into the model like this. So Root Policy said, we're going to project housing growth based on two things. One, the population estimates, which the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development put out. And I actually happened to sit on the working group for that. And the other is the employment projections put out by the New Hampshire Employment Security. And those are both weighted equally and go in. And then it looks at, they look at, okay, what is your current housing makeup in terms of tenure? You know, whether you own a rent and income. And there it tries to make some vacancy adjustments so that the vacancy tries to get to be ideally for, I believe, for rentals, it's five percent and for homeowners, it's three percent vacancy. And then from that, you get the cumulative number of units that are, you know, are required by tenure and by income in five-year intervals. And it's important to remember that the fair share housing numbers are not that a town or a city must build. It's that they must make reasonable accommodation if there is the demand. So if you lived in a town where nobody wants to live, you're not responsible for not, you know, have those housing units being built. There has to actually be the market demand. So here we have the fair share cumulative housing, net new housing units by a five-year interval. So this is cumulative. So in between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five, Londonderry should build, was, should allow for the building of six hundred and nine housing units. And then you see there for twenty thirty, it says eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-one. That doesn't mean you need to build another.
One thousand one hundred and twenty-one.
What did I say?
Eleven.
Oh, one thousand one hundred and twenty-one. That doesn't mean you need to build additional one thousand one hundred and twenty-one, saying the total cumulative units should be that number. And you can see it goes up pretty quick in the beginning. And then when you get out to some of the final years, you, between twenty-three, excuse me, twenty, thirty-five and twenty forty, it's not growing very much. That's because the population projections is such that New Hampshire population will start slowing down. And if less things change, in twenty fifty, population will be declining within the state. As I said, it's set up by renter and, and income. So for Londonderry in, let's see, in twenty twenty-five, the units, total number of renter units there are one hundred and ninety, a hundred, one hundred and ninety-three. Of those, fifty percent need to be below, affordable to those below, making below sixty percent the AMI. And then a hundred and forty-three for those above. And again, these are cumulative, so you can see that it grows over time. We see something similar here for the net new owner occupied housing units. Between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five, the London should allow four hundred and sixteen total units of those. A hundred and thirty-five should be affordable to those below one hundred percent area median income. Now, these look like a lot, big numbers. You see, look out there for, you know, twenty forty, it's eleven hundred, one, seven, one thousand one hundred and seventeen units. It seems like a lot. But if we compare it to what the towns have actually been building, it's not that scary. So you can see, here's the average annual net housing units based from, you know, looking at what the historical trend and then what's projected under the fair share housing numbers. So if we look at Londonderry alone, Londonderry is already building this number of units that the fair share housing model projects. You know, you're already, already doing a hundred and ten units a year on average. And for most towns, it's, you know, these are, you know, large numbers, but they're, you know, Bedford last decade built sixty units. But before that, they were building two hundred and twenty. And, you know, the model is only asking for a hundred. So these are not massive numbers. They're within reason that we've done in our recent history.
Zach?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nope, other way.
Back to page, back to page thirty-four, sorry.
Uh, which one is that?
Fair share cumulative net new rent or occupied housing units by income.
I went too far. This one?
Yes. So you said should, Londonderry should. What does that mean?
I'm not a lawyer. They, there's a whole bunch of, if you actually read the document, there's a whole bunch of, you know, legal, you know, explanation that this, these are not legally binding numbers. This is just, you know, the recommendation to meet the, you know, the workforce housing law to actually to find out if a town is in compliance with a workforce housing law, they would actually need to be a actual, you know, analysis done, looking at assessing data and stuff like that.
So as, as per your mission, which is advisory, yes, this data is just data.
Yes.
For informational purposes for
Yep.
a town planner to look at.
Yeah, and say, you know, okay, what, you know, how many should we be building or be allowing in a year? How are we doing as a town? Are we meeting our, our requirement? Are we not? That sort of thing.
Thank you.
I think though, just to throw in, when we first started having these discussions about fair share and there was a lot of controversy about what, what does it mean? What do, you know, a lot of people start pounding, pounding the desk. It's, it's not our town, it's not our town, and we don't need to do this, we don't have to do this. And I'm like, Zach, let's just, let's just bring up this, which is what are towns building right now? Because I already knew from having worked with London Dairy, that you guys are very open to variety of types of housing. You're, you know, you've brought in all kinds of different groups.
As opposed to Windham. As opposed to other towns.
Let's, let's just keep it.
You can say Windham, it's okay.
I don't, I don't think you can.
No, we cannot. And so let's, you know.
You're very good.
I think that, I have to be. And so I, I just wanted to keep it in perspective, what you all are already doing. And so, you know, I think this really shows you've, you are meeting what you need to do here. And, you know, but we've also seen from Zach's graphs that just the amount of housing in general being built is so few. We still need to just keep up housing, whether it's affordable, not affordable, just any units is important really right now. Keep going.
Our master plans, you know, going back into the eighties even, really call for diversity of, of housing. And that's been something consistent, you know, over the last, I'd say probably forty, probably fifty years in, in town.
And, you know, that's a good point. The master plan pointing to diversity in housing. I can tell you that probably every single town has that same statement. We are going to, we are going to create diverse housing. And then an applicant comes in with some diverse housing. And the butters come out panicked, panicked about whatever it is in front of them. And then whether it's the zoning board or the planning board, and they also panic. And that's the problem. You guys aren't panicked. You're, you're taking things in. I'm not saying every town panics, but you would just need to look what's in front of us. Is it according to the regulations? Is it allowed? You know, all those things, we just have to weigh all those different things. Keep us going.
Okay.
Can I follow up on those two slides O twos? Is that what, what Dad's telling us is that on thirty-four, that by twenty, twenty twenty-five, we need a hundred and ninety-three new units?
So you go back. That was the renter or?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's saying, you were talking about the total there for under twenty twenty-five of saying, you know, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five, a hundred and ninety-three should be built or should be allowed to be built, of which fifty would be workforce housing and a hundred and forty-three would be market rate.
Yeah. And then on the next slide, it's saying that four hundred and sixteen houses between twenty twenty and twenty-five.
Correct. And that's done, I forget, it's been a while since that we looked at this model, but they did it. So they tried to match the amount of rental and owner occupied within a town, didn't want to change it too much. So that's why you see a higher number here for Londonderry, for owner occupied as opposed to rental.
And what, have they been building? Go to the next slide.
As Art reached out to me last week, this week, I can't remember, it's all, to see, ask him.
Last week.
Ask him about, you know, how, you know, Londonderry was doing and compared it to the previous plan. And I said, well, the previous previous plan, and I said, well, the previous assessment used a different method for calculating the fair share number, so it kind of just got thrown away. But I looked at what Londonderry, what you were building, and which, even within the last couple of years, if just in terms of absolute units, you've already met, more than met your, requirement in terms of types of how, uh, how, total units. Whether tenure and, uh, tenure and, you know, income levels, that's harder to say. My guess is you haven't for single-family homes or owner occupied, just because owner occupied housing is so expensive right now. There's such a shortage, it, it would be hard to. But, you know, for just looking at total units, you're already there.
And when you, um, so for the single, that third, slide thirty-five, it has four hundred and sixteen owner occupied? Like, does that take into account, like zoning, you know, you need an acre or something like that? If that's even feasible inside?
They, so there, there was a component of the, of the, uh, of the fair share housing model that did look at, like, you know, uh, can, is, can you actually build this within your area? So towns like, like Newcastle, which is an island that's already built out, is this, you know, could you build a hundred new family, single-family homes? Is that even possible? So the answer would be no, and there was something that got triggered for that. I don't think it, I can't remember if it done anything for zoning, but it did look for, you know, sheer available land. And there, and there's a flag in there that, you know, would trip, uh, trip if it went above that.
The thing is, land is like a capacity thing. As it starts to fill up, the price of it goes up. As more fills up, the price goes even, even higher. Typical, uh, capacity issue.
Yeah, because when you get into those other years, twenty-third, twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-five, I mean, do you guys have suggestions and things to get more creative on your land uses? Because those-
We do.
You, you, that's what I'm figuring. You must have something like that, because you're, if you live by your current subdivision or, uh, regulations, you run out of land.
I would say that Londonderry has, you know, some undeveloped parcels still, or under, underdeveloped, but it would be hard to probably come up with a thousand new single-family homes on one acre, in the town. And so, like, in you would, you would have to say, okay, if you have to build that a thousand units by twenty-forty, some of those would have to be condos or smaller, you know, uh, cluster developments or something like that. And I'm sure Sylvia has suggestions, or, you know, there, there's creative, uh, creative solutions out there to try to meet those numbers.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On, uh, number, page thirty-four, if I'm looking down the first column of Londonderry, it says, um, a hundred and ninety-three units. Is that assuming a one person in the unit?
There's no, uh, oh, actually, there probably is an assumption there, and I don't, again, I've not looked at the model.
Cause that bothers me, because when I was, when I went, you know, got my first official higher-paying job, I, I, um, I lived in an apartment with two other people I didn't even know, just so I could rent something. My next, uh, place I moved to was a, a Victorian home, that I had, uh, three other roommates. One was the homeowner, and two other rental rooms in it, four, actually, three, one was in the attic, for, you know, a, a group of people who were starting out, in their first jobs, second jobs, or whatever, so we could save money. And the third one was somebody I didn't know, if anybody knows where the Dairy Dome in Stonem was, it was a house next door to it, and it was a little apartment, and I lived with a girl I never even met before, just to have a place to live. And then finally, when I got married, we rented a small house. And then four years later, we bought the house. It was a rent to buy. And then we finally moved to Londonderry, but we bought the worst house in a good neighborhood. And I knocked on the doors, trying to find out if anybody had kids in the neighborhood, because that's what I wanted, because I, by that time, I had two children. So, you know, we put in a lot of sacrifice to get what we do have now. And I don't see any skin in the game for people who, you know, were assuming there's a one person in an apartment. I don't see that. That's foreign to me.
It isn't foreign to us.
Pardon?
I can, it's not foreign to us. We know that story. We know that story exists today. I have a staff, for example, who's done exactly what you've done. He's out of school, it's his second place, he's sharing with people he's never met. So kids do that out of school, young people do that out of school. It's not uncommon, sharing a place to rent, that, that has several rooms, and they share a kitchen, et cetera. So that same scenario is happening today.
I, my first place out of college, I lived in a place with ten people. So, you know, uh, but when we look at the-
So why are we assuming that it's one person per-
I don't know, I'm not, I don't know for sure that it is one person. I'd have to, again, look at the model. I imagine it probably assumes that, you know, for the averages for rental, whatever it is, it's, you know, it's probably like one point five, and then for, you know, owner occupied, it's two point one or something like that. The, the average is what they end up using.
The other thing is, if, you know, if you've got a three-bedroom apartment where there are three people, the rent is not fifteen hundred dollars. Their rent's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Well, yeah, when I lived with three people, we, uh, flipped a coin to see who gets one of the big bedroom, the small bedroom, and who slept on the couch. So it was, we, we did what we had to do to save money.
Had a double-sided dime, didn't you?
Yeah. So for, for these, keep in mind that this is just a model, and for that, these are just guidelines, and we can find, there are definitely shortcomings with every part of it, but it's how you use it.
I think Roger has a question.
Yes.
I, I just have a little bit of a statement, and I don't want to bore everybody with, I lived on Beacon Hill, and I moved to Salem, and my rent on Beacon Hill, Boston, was less than buying a house in Salem, New Hampshire. But that was sixty years ago. And those, the, the things today are so out of perspective that, you know, you can't really think about what we did in those days. I did not have roommates. I, but you can't do those things today.
Exactly.
You can't find a place, I rented, I owned some rental properties over in Dairy, and it was, uh, three hundred or four hundred dollars a month for a, a three-bedroom place. And that was very economical, but there were, you know, nobody could really, they were having, they were all hired, cause they couldn't afford them. So, and that was probably fifty years ago. So you have to look at what today's perspective is. People make twice as, three times what I used to make, but they cost them four times or five times to live today.
Exactly.
And, and how do we change that, is what-
Right.
I think we're trying to do here.
All right, keep us going, Zach.
Okay. So we looked at this one, just absolute numbers, but if, this is the same slide, but just looking at the percentages, the average annual net new housing units by percentage. So again, you can see that Londonderry is, you know, already on track to meet its, uh, it's fair share housing numbers in terms of absolute units. Again, you can see also that, you know, as you go farther out, it decreases, as we see, see the population is also gonna decrease. Excuse me. Okay, I'm almost done here. I think I have three more slides, but we're gonna change it again here, and we're gonna look at, uh, assessing data, and just turn, look at how, uh, acreage size affects prices. So what we have here is the, the, uh, acreage there is the X-axis, so the number, the, the total, the acres for a single-family home, and on the left there, we have the average property value by acreage decile. What's that mean? Makes you take all the, all these single-family homes in the region, you line them up in order of size, you break them into ten equal s- groups, and then you take the average of those groups. And that allows you to pull out some general trends from what otherwise is pretty noisy data. And what we see in the region here is that between, you know, let's see, less than, you know, less than one acre and two acres, we see growth of about two hundred thousand dollars in terms of the cost of a home in the region. So, in the, in that's an HPC region, the average single-family home on one acre costs twice as much as a home on a tenth of an acre. And we break it down to individual communities, and it shows up as well. And now, think about, what are we getting in terms of value per that size? So again, we have a chart, uh, graph there on the left, where the, the bottom X-axis there is the average parcel acreage, so the average acreage of that single-family home. And then there, on the left, is the average real property value per acre. Again, this is breaking them up into, uh, averages for, uh, twenty different groups. And you can see that, you know, uh, that as acreage increases, the value per acre that a home provides for a property town, for the town, decreases. So the typical single-family home in Londonderry, on a fifth of an acre, is worth two, twenty-one, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars less than the typical acre, uh, home on two acres, but generates more than eight times as much gross revenue per area for the town. So you have a hypothetical return on investment, gross return on investment, so not thinking about costs from services, that sort of thing. A single-family home on, you know, if you have a ten-acre plot of land, and you allow for, uh, tenth of an acre homes, the total property value for that, uh, that tract is twenty-one million, uh, excuse me, twenty-two million. If you allow just two-acre, uh, parcel, uh, two-acre acreage parcels, it'd be about two million.
So said a different way, a town like Londonderry would have more revenue if they reduced their lot mandatory size to one-tenth of an acre, because it would be worth more so they could tax it more, so they'd have higher revenue. But you'd also have more kids to put in the schools.
And so that's, but you keep, and that's-
Schools, cars on the streets.
So, yeah, and so that's where you gotta weigh, you know, so this is just looking at the gross. This is just how much you're getting, not how much it costs you. But we have to keep in mind that those households aren't full of kids anymore. They're full, you know, the, the household that I grew up in, where it was my parents and my brother, uh, and, and me growing up in suburban Hudson, those households are gone. Now, the, you know, less, you know, ha, uh, it used to be one minor per house, per, uh, excuse me, one minor per household in nineteen eighty in Londonderry. Now it's half that. So, you know, uh, that, you know, can't think of, you know, uh, can't think of young families only in terms of costs, cause they really, you know, that's what we dealt with in, over the last thirty years. Going forward, it's probably not gonna be young families, it's probably, it's probably gonna be seniors. You know, they're the ones who use EMS services. I can tell you, my dad gets a lot more, you know, use of his town services than I do for Manchester. You know, those single fa, those families are pretty much gone.
Doesn't it balance it, because your dad doesn't have a kid in the school?
Well, but they've still gotta pay for the school.
I'm just, I understand that, but-
Wouldn't, also-
But he's tra, but he's trading off-
Yeah.
What, he's, he's paid eleven thousand dollars, but how, what he used it for was different than what you would use it for, because you might have two kids in the school district, which uses up your eleven thousand, but you don't use EMS or fire or police.
Right, yeah, so I-
So it balances.
It's not more saying that each, one uses more than the others, it's that they, they, everybody uses services, except, you know, probably your, your twenty-five-year-old single person, they're not using anything, but everybody, you know, the families, uh, older individuals, they're, they're, you know, taking care of services.
Also, wouldn't, so if you had that house at two hundred eleven thousand dollars less, that would be more attractive to a young family?
Yes.
As opposed to a house that's four hundred thousand dollars, that somebody has to be well into their forties to be able to afford.
Well, you, you-
But to that, what's the market doing? There's no difference in a price on-
No, I know, I know, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, and, and I, I agree with everything you're saying, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, but if you have a cheaper house, you would have a younger family likely buy it, which we desperately need in the state. So I agree with that.
Possibly, yeah, I agree with that, although, you know, we've also seen, my, we, in towns like Wyndham, they've built a lot of expensive single-family homes in, over the last decade, same with, with Auburn. They've seen big jumps in families, uh, in school enrollment, cause even though they are more expensive, there are still families that are willing, that have the money, that can, you know, you know, they're moving from the Boston metro, and, you know, their house go, their dollar goes twice as far now. One last slide for me, I believe, and then you're free. So, this is just an example, visualizing value, cost, and rate of return. So these are two single-family residential properties in the same municipality. The one there on the left is on less than a tenth of an acre. The one on the right is more than an acre. The one on the left was built in nineteen hundred, the one in the left was built about twenty years ago.
On the right?
What did I say? On the left, on the right. I'm really on, yeah, shining tonight. Both of these have water and sewer service. The one on the left is about le, uh, less than a tenth of a mile from federal aid eligible roads. The one on the right is more than a mile. The one, and the one on the right is also twice as far from distance from state-maintained roads. So the property value for the one on the left is three hundred and six thousand dollars. Property value for the one on the right is five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You know, value per living area is actually not that different, but if you look at the value per acre, the one on the left is providing three, about three point five million dollars in tax property value for the town compared to just three hundred and forty thousand for the one on the right. And then which one of these is gonna be, is more likely to have a, a large family in it? Probably not the small nineteen hundreds, uh, era house. Wow. You ready?
You're, you can take a break now. All right, now we've depressed you, or at least are you're thinking.
That's how, that's what I, I'm here for.
Yes.
Yeah, the numbers are circulating, you know.
Yeah, you're probably dizzy with all the numbers and the graphs. So recommendations, and some low-hanging fruit. Many of these things you may either be working on or considering. So let's review some. So first, beginning with community goals in mind. This is really basic stuff, but we need to remind ourselves anyway. First, updating the master plan, ensuring the commu, community engagement, and input guides the master plan goals. That's really important. Number two, conduct a regulation assessment to identify roadblocks. And three, to ensure the community's master plan is in sync with zoning and other land use regulations. Cause often what we'll see is, a community, maybe they'll update their master plan, but they don't end up updating their regulations or their zoning. So you need to make all of this in sync. Next thing, we know that the whole idea of one-size-fits-all never works quite right. And so allowing flexibility in regulations, I'm sure you already utilized your conditional-use-permit method for case-by-case considerations, supporting reuse and redevelopment for existing and abandoned structures, and for infill lots that allow setbacks that match abutters. So those last two especially, when you think about, I'm sure you can all think about either an abandoned property, or, um, a situation where there's, uh, a lot that nothing's been happening on, and maybe there's existing, um, commercial activity or residential activity next to it. So allowing things like just infill lots, allowing setbacks to match, um, abutters instead of whatever is required right now, that just, that just makes things easier for whoever is suggesting the development. This is an area where, when I was town planner in Exeter, we were very successful. That help-wanted, we've all seen that, as I referred to that earlier, and especially in, you know, all our commercial areas. When one of my hotspots that I like to, on a Friday night, go pick up, um, my favorite salad and, with grilled chicken, uh, Front Row Pizza, Exeter. When I started seeing that they were closed, or help-wanted signs, and they were, you know, I couldn't go there anymore, especially during the worst parts of COVID, I'm like, this is terrible. And a lot of that was for businesses, but, so what, how do we resolve that? And so that business happens to be along Epping Road, Route twenty-seven in Exeter. If you know that area, that's a commercial strip, and the way those lots were developed, they were long, and so a lot of the commercial was up front, and the back portions just weren't developed. So years ago, probably now it's over a decade ago, we worked with the planning board then in Exeter, and said, let's rework these properties so that you can develop multifamily in the back and the commercial up front. And that's what we did. And so that image on the, the bottom of the picture, that is Route twenty-seven, and you can see some of the, uh, larger parking lots, that's multifamily, and that- And you can see some of the larger parking lots, that's multifamily and that's off the road. You can't even see that from the road. So this helped in two ways. It created a lot of opportunity for multifamily. No one came out, none of the NIMBYs came out screaming, oh my God, the noise, the traffic, whatever. This is a commercial area. They already set up for more traffic. And so there was no problem. Uh, so rethinking your commercial, your office and your industrial zones to allow that multifamily behind the businesses is so important. I'm sure also, the first bullet here, allowing and encouraging employer housing to promote employment and housing opportunities. You may have heard many of the recent stories over the last couple of years of business owners who can't find staff. They're creating their own housing on their own property. And so we've highlighted that. I, I think Art and Lynn, you've probably seen that from the Randolphs. Um, they're owners of, um, uh, what is it? Senior Housing.
Oh, okay.
And so they couldn't get staff. And so they built their own housing on their property. They got allowances from Dover to do that, and I think also Durham. And so very successful. They attracted the staff they needed. They didn't have any not in your backyard screaming. And so it was, it was an easy fix. So why aren't we encouraging more of that?
Seems to be successful in Dover, because I think there's a, also, I think part of the contractor who couldn't find people, so he built housing for his, you know, employees. He brought people in, housing was for them, and a daycare for them. They had a, like an exercise room and everything, so it, uh, was, was kind of like a needy thing. Kind of like going back to the old mill days in the eighteen hundreds in Manchester.
Exactly. He did it all himself. He wasn't a contractor, but he became one. And his wife's an architect. She suddenly became the designer of this housing. So they, they have figured it out and now they're traveling across New Hampshire and talking to all kinds of groups. And so they're trying to duplicate that elsewhere.
And they just, I believe, opened, I guess, another word, they had the cottage court in Dover, which is, you know, they worked with other employers to say, hey, we want to build housing for our employees. And so there is this cottage court now in, in Dover where they share, they don't actually, you don't have to be an employee to work there, anybody can work there, but it's there, it's available for them.
Yeah, I think those, those units are somewhere in the six hundred square foot ballpark. So they're not quite the tiny house, but they're, they're small. They're really small. Um, all right, considering the needs of the community, uh, we know, and, and when you start your own master plan process, which I'm sure Kelly can't wait to start, one of the things you want to do, of course, is engage the public. Most of the time what we hear is people want walkable communities, uh, they want them accessible. We know, uh, because this is an aging state and so many are trying to downsize from those larger homes, they want to be, they want to walk. Their doctors are telling them, walk three miles a day and you'll live to be a hundred. And so they want to walk. So listening to what your community wants is so important. And, and creating, being able to create those, um, regulations to allow it is so important. And then incentivizing and requiring a percentage homes to allow, for example, universal design, so they're accessible to people of all ages and abilities is important. So this is a, I think, a state of DYIers. And so you can do that with housing by, um, really making ADU units easier, um, to happen. Certainly, they already fit into the neighborhood. If you consider it, it does double your density and it's a win-win for aging in place. Because you can, if you're an older person, you can create a space for either your young, um, adult.
Children.
Thank you. Children and.
Adult children.
Your adult children and, yeah. Or your caretaker. And we've seen many examples of that in our region. Conversion of larger single family homes into multiple units without changing the footprint, that is really easy stuff. And then, of course, allowing tiny home or tiny home harbors. So those are pieces of property where you have it set up, whether you have, uh, public sewer and water, or you have a system that can accommodate it. Maybe the soil allows it, but you're allowing for much reduced homes, like the example in Dover, and, uh, allowing those tiny homes. They're closer, they're smaller, and they're walkable, all of that.
Can I ask a question with the ADUs? Is it always like restricted to family members? Are you seeing it, uh, related entities or?
They're not restricted to family, no, not at all.
I think in Londonderry it is, right?
No, it's not. The, the state law changed several years ago that took that requirement out and Londonderry does not require that.
One, it'd be really hard to enforce that. And, yeah, two, no, it's not a requirement. Some of them require that, uh, one per, the person has, who owns the property lives in one of the units.
We, we require that the property owner reside in either.
Either, not the main one?
It doesn't matter which one, no. Because if you were, let's say you're an older adult and you can no longer climb the stairs in your older home, but you converted the garage or the barn, or you built on, you made it accessible for yourself. So the young person, maybe it's your, uh, adult son or daughter comes, moves in with the family or a, whoever it is, comes, moves in, in the, in the house that has the stairs and all of that. So making the accessible, um, unit, that's the one you would want if you have accessibility issues.
So you said it quickly. I, I just want to say it again, but it's really sewer and water that has a big effect on density, yes? And in a, in a place like Londonderry in particular.
Yes and no. It depends how your regulations are. Certainly, if you have water and sewer, it's so much easier. But also, when I was in Exeter, we worked with Eric Chinberg and he did multifamily on, and for well and septic, but he created a system, one, the soil was okay, um, and he, you know. If we can send someone to the moon, we can certainly figure out well and septic. And, you know, I've, I've seen presentations where lots are absolutely postage, postage stamp, but they have innovative well and septic.
Thank you.
All right, we've covered this one. Speaking of, um, yeah, density is not a four letter word. Allow the science and innovation to determine necessary water and wastewater infrastructure. This is a very old, this, um, so way back, I, I think, what does that say, that date?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen?
Two thousand and three.
Oh, I was reading the other thing.
So two thousand and three is when DES last updated this. But certainly, creating soil based density equations instead of random five acre or three acre, let the land decide what it is capable of holding. Um, and certainly communicate the type of growth you want. This was inspired by Londonderry. Creating a visual guide for developers to ensure growth is in line with community desires. You have your Londonderry lookbook, right? And so I think, um, you're way in front of that game and you can certainly update that as, as the community changes.
It's in process of updating.
Updating a lookbook. Does that happen yet?
It's in Kelly's spare time because.
Initiative, remember?
I know, but it, has it been, has it been updated and posted and?
No, we haven't got it yet.
Not posted.
All right.
It's, it's, it's in progress.
So are subject.
Move on.
Move on.
Move on. Okay, John says move on. Uh, research what other communities in New Hampshire are doing, because there are other communities like you that are forward thinking and they, they want to attract young families. They want to be able, they're, uh, older adults to downsize and stay in their communities. Invite community input to provide examples of buildings and building details that honor their community character. And that's so easy to show developers who are coming into the town. So this is one of the, um, outcomes also of our regional housing needs assessment. The nine regional planning commissions got together. They understood there was some extra funding from the state and everyone decided they wanted to create this New Hampshire housing toolbox. This is, I believe, on our website, but all you have to do is, uh, Google New Hampshire housing toolbox. I'm sure you can find it. And there are, um, sort of like one pages for all of these different, um, challenges. So whether it's accessory dwelling units or cluster housing, inclusionary zoning, et cetera. If you're interested in how you might make this happen in your own community, you can find this. And each category, it explains what it is, how it can help, how to get started, different nuances and considerations, resources, uh, articles, presentations, et cetera. Issues that that addresses, uh, related tools, and any state laws that made, might apply. And that is it. And now I think we've earned our chocolate, Art.
Yes. I have some for you, Sylvia, and, and staff too.
There's not enough chocolate. Cookies in our office already.
You're welcome.
Nice, thank you. Look at, he went all out, Lake Champlain, organic dark. If you think this is making it to the office, you're funny. No, it will.
Those are excellent.
This was, this was very comprehensive and very informative. And thank you very much for, for taking the time to do this for us. Appreciate it.
I'm very happy to be here and be invited. We did the same thing for Huxit. And I don't know if it came to fruition, your change in your, in emotions, but did that happen, I have to ask? Did you get shocked, depressed, and then uplifted? Come on. Jason did.
Depressing aspects about it, but I think looking at the positive, you know, trying to change some of that negative into, into positive is what, uh, I think we're, we're interested in, in pursuing. Because, you know, as I said, our master plans have always stated a diversity of housing is the desire of the community, so.
What it, what it showed me was we're in pretty good shape. Londonderry itself is in pretty good shape.
You are in good shape.
Yeah, it's kind of unfortunate that you were one of the towns that asked, because, you know, you're already doing so much of it. You're already, you're already trying these things.
Well, it's probably one of the reasons why we're in good shape, because we are taking that initiative.
Yeah. But in the end, we end up, it's a little bit preaching to the choir.
Ask a public school teacher who comes to parent teacher meetings. It's not the parent of the kid who's always in trouble. It's, it's in good shape. Same thing here. Thank you for coming. It was awesome.
All right, thank you very much.
I think some of this we can, we can put into use when we get into our, uh, updated, our new master plan.
And if you have any further questions, you think of something, please contact us. We're always willing to help and answer questions.
That's, that's good. We certainly appreciate this, so it, uh, it is helpful.
Well, Kelly knows where to find us.
How much did your rent go over? What was it, thirty-five percent over?
It was between, I can't remember exactly, it was between thirty-five and forty.
Over how many years?
Uh, two thousand eleven, uh, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, so, so just, just for the record, so it, you, you said you lived in a housing place where you had ten roommates? I'm a child of the sixties. We called that a commune back.
Yeah. This had a similar vibe. And instead of, yeah, yeah, there was a.
What's the matter with that?
I'm just saying.
It could also be called a fraternity house.
Yeah, yeah, all of these, all, all of these.
It's got to be near a college, though.
So and again, if you're interested, write on our web page, SNHPC dot, dot org. Thank you. And, um, there's just right on the left hand side of that page, it's our housing needs assessment. Just click on that. You can find all the information and start through the eight hundred pages of data that Zach was talking about.
Find out way more than you want to know.
All right, great.
It's great if your, uh, numbers walk, you know, you can get totally immersed in it and, and you say, what does all this mean?
Yeah.
But, but, but like Zach, a good statistician can put that together into, you know, get something meaningful, even putting it in lay terms, so, you know, the normal person can understand it.
Yes. All right, I think my spouse is ready to, to see me at home. So I'm running.
You don't know Londonderry. We're not allowed to leave before ten.
I, I was, I was. December, you, you went to one AM, so I figured we had a couple more hours.
Looks like we have one April third, if you want to come back.
Oh, yeah. Please, please don't ask us to come back.
Request sleeping bags and snacks.
Yeah.
The old days, back in the eighties, it was always to one or two AM, every Wednesday night.